The February 4th, 2017 is not called to order. Please stand for the Flood's Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please take your own.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. Will any citizens that make, would like to make comments on agenda-related items? We have none. Consent Agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may ask an item, may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during regular portion of the meeting. Council agenda items include: Approval of Minutes; Cash Balances; Quarterly Financial Update; Quarterly Investment Update; Notification Regarding the Next Work Session; Consideration of Manistee World and Arts and Crafts; Use of Red Marzipot Park. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll make some motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protown Zalinski. I have a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? Please take your own.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business: Consideration of an Agreement with the County Prosecuting Attorney, Manistee County. In November 2015, the city negotiated a one-year agreement with the county prosecuting attorney to prosecute violations of certain city ordinances, codes, and state statutes which are by definition misdemeanors. That agreement expired December 31, 2016. Staff is recommending an 11-month successor agreement through December 31, 2017. At this time, council could take action to authorize an agreement with Manistee County and the county prosecuting attorney expiring December 31, 2017. I'll make some motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protown Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion? If I, if I could please, I would like to ask for a little explanation as to why we follow this process and pay prosecutor for these misdemeanors.
Mayor, maybe I can answer that. The city council, as a home rule city, is allowed to adopt certain legislation or ordinances that make offenses or actions that the public may commit, either civil infractions or criminal violations. Civil infractions, ordinances that are punishable as civil infractions in the city are handled through my office and the city attorneys. Ordinances that are criminal penalties, criminal penalties, such as there's some disturbance of the knees, disturbance of the peace ordinances, there's an ordinance that makes a criminal offense to be in possession of drug paraphernalia. And then the city also has adopted the Uniform Traffic Code, which includes driving with a suspended license, drug driving offenses, and the like. Those offenses that are criminal violations are generally handled by prosecutors. In larger cities, a city attorney's office may handle those types of misdemeanor prosecutions, but those would be cities that have attorneys that all they do are criminal prosecutions, and so it's similar to that of a, in our county, the prosecuting attorney's office. What we've found is that in smaller communities, it's more economical to have a local prosecuting attorney's office handle these criminal violations. Their staff, that's all they, you know, that's what they handle and that's what they do, from writing criminal complaints to preparing warrants that then are authorized for the issuance of arrest or for search warrants. All of those types of requests are something that our prosecutor's office handles on a regular basis, and so we have someone else handle that, you know, certainly would not be cost-effective. Since, I would guess probably about 20 years, the city of Manistee is contracted for those types of services with the prosecuting attorney's office. It went back to when Dennis Swain was, I believe, the prosecuting attorney that we first contracted for that. We monitor it and are more closely monitoring it with respect to what the city recovers in fines and costs as a result of criminal offenses that are city ordinance violations and prosecuting, and what the city then ends up recovering in fines. We're monitoring that more and going to ask for that to be monitored more with this next contract, so we can kind of take a look at what the city is receiving in revenue because we're prosecuting these as city ordinance violations versus what it's costing us. But this has been something that we've done for certainly a number of years, if not certainly more than a decade.
I, I have a question. I'm trying to make it clear in my head, and I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So a misdemeanor committed in father township would be treated differently than a misdemeanor committed in the city of Manistee?
Father Township does not, has not adopted ordinances that make offenses under their ordinance a criminal violation, so they don't have the opportunity to have a local constable that might arrest someone and then ultimately issue a ticket under their ordinance. So someone that commits a drunk driving in father township is going to be charged under state law.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. Is there any other questions or comments? The City Clerk, please take your own.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an Amendment to the T-Mobile site lease at the Industrial Park Water Tower. City of Manistee leases space at both water towers to communication companies who provide cellular service. T-Mobile has a current lease at the Industrial Water Park Tower. In order to comply with federal regulations, T-Mobile is proposing a backup power generator at the site along with a propane tank. The lease area would be expanded by 10 square feet, and the rent would increase by $60 per month. The fire department and city attorney have reviewed and approved the amendment. At this time, council could take action to approve the Second Amendment to the T-Mobile Central LLC lease agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlam, a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion or comments? Please take your own.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Authorizing the Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. A relevant protective order of the Oaks would like to hold the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Friday, March 17, 2017. Start time would be 5:00 PM with the staging area at the parking lot on the corner of Greenbush and Water Street. The parade would begin at the corner of Greenbush and River Street, traveling west on River Street. This is a new location and sponsor for this annual event. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Oaks St. Patrick's Day Parade on Friday, March 17, 2017, subject to the appropriate department approvals.
I'll make that motion.
No second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protown Zalinski and support by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion?
What's the, what's the appropriate departmental approvals?
It's usually run through the police department and fire department to see if there's any issues.
Okay.
Yeah, just, okay.
Chief Bachman is always tied off on.
And, and the chief normally handles all special event requests, so he's approved and recommending this.
This is the first year I'll be down River Street though, right?
I think so.
So I might.
Just for clarification, there's no traffic removal or anything else that just going to shut traffic down long enough for him to march down the street?
And the chief estimates it's going to take about 10 minutes or so, so it's not a burden on the department. It's going to be long on this thing. Max.
City Clerk, please take your own.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a Northwest Michigan Health Department Fitness Trail Grant Application for Douglas Park. The city of Manistee has been invited to submit a grant application to the Health Department of Northwest Michigan. The Park Commission has selected the construction of a fitness trail within Douglas Park for this grant application. Total project cost for Phase 1 is $39,000. The grant request is for $20,000. The Public Works Department would provide in-kind service valued at $6,000. The remaining $13,000 match would need to be included in the 2017 to 2018 fiscal year budget. At this time, council could take action to approve a grant application to the Health Department of Northwest Michigan in the amount of $20,000 and commit matching funds to complete Phase 1 of the Fitness Trail in Douglas Park. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlam and support by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any questions or comments on this?
I have a question about the money. I actually have two questions. The first is about the money. What, are we, are we going to have to give up anything to come up with this money?
Well, this would, if we do receive the grant, we would put it in consideration in the next budget here, and as, as the DPW has indicated that we can do some in-kind. And at staff today, we discussed the possibility of submitting it to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for, for matching our grant. So if we get the grant, we're going to have to come up with a match, whether it's our funds out of pocket, whether it's in-kind, or if we submit a grant to the Local Revenue Sharing Board.
My next question, maybe a concern. We, attending the Parks Commission meetings, there seems to be an ever-growing need for parks' maintenance and time to keep up the parks. Now we're going to be adding another, a park or another, something that's going to need maintained, maintenance and time. Do we have the time to do that? So can somebody address that?
DPW didn't indicate there would be any, any additional work that they couldn't incorporate into their schedule.
As I understand the information on this, the application is due by the 10th of this month?
Right.
And, and then it's a process of waiting to see if we're accepted for the grant?
Exactly. We had to issue a, give them a letter of intent that we intended to apply for grant pending authorization by council. So we would, we would submit the grant, and I don't know exactly what the timeframe is in terms of awards.
And, and we're in front of the Revenue Sharing Board grant request period?
Then we missed that deadline because we didn't know if we had the authorization. We might be able to get it in yet, we don't know. If not, we'll do it in the fall.
Okay.
Because what we would do is, we'd have to wait until the new year, new budget year for us, because we have nothing allocated right now.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? City Clerk, please take your own.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A Report from Republic Services. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Matt Lott will report on the activities of Republic Services and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activity.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of Republic Services, as always, we'd like to thank the community for your support and give you our annual update for your review. The time period for this update is July 15 through June of 16. As we know, Republic Services has been a community partner for many, many years. We operate the landfill over a strong township just outside the state limits, which also includes a gas processing facility for the landfill gases generated at that, a hauling organization, of course, in our offices and customer services. In northern Michigan, Republic Service employs 278 members, which represents three different landfill operations. The current contract became effective July 1, 2010, was extended July 1 of 2015, its uncurrent 60-month term cycle. The exciting part of 2016 is we did a transfer from recycle bins to recycle carts in April. There's roughly about 115 homes that participate in the recycling program. They pay a substantial fee of $6.75 a month for that service. The 96-gallon carts are still done on a bi-weekly collection. Gives added convenience and ease for those residents. At the bottom of this chart, you'll see the recycling tonnages for both of those. The Comingo recycle tonnage is your curbside program, which is actually participating, or which is actually functioning very well, at about 51 pounds per home compared to the industry average at 27 pounds. The recycling drop-off sites was an interesting trend this year, which follows a larger conversation that we've been adding. Last year, you did 55 pulls of the large recycle container at the drop site. This year, it was 64 pulls, so we went up 10 extra additional containers. However, the tonnage weight went down 367 tons. The reason for that is what's known as the evolving ton, not to get you far into the weeds. It just means if you look back historically, in the year 2000, 48,000 water bottles made one ton of weight. If you fast forward that to 2015, it now takes 92,000 water bottles to make that same one ton of weight, and that's because of the light weighting of the plastic when you hold a bottle and crinkle it and all the water jumps out, it's because there's no plastic left in the bottle. So that has been one of the big changes. You'll also see that same evolution in your tied containers. You used to have a nice HD PET tied bottle that switched to the pods, which was in an off-spec PET container. PET is a form of plastic, much like your water, and now that's going off to flexible packaging. So those things keep on driving those weights down, but the volumes keep on going up because a water bottle's still the same volume dimension, just the weight of it goes away. Any questions on that? Nope? Awesome. Quick review of the tons. 2013 was your peak at 213. You were 206, now you're at 211, staying pretty flat. Nothing extreme to talk about there. Your costs actually went down a little bit again in 2016. So if you look at 2014 and 2016, pretty close. Jumping onto the Spring Trash Hall, last year, we did do a collection event in the community. This year, we're back to the bulky item again. Next year, we'll do a spring collection again. So it goes on and off every other year's cycle. And that is my short and sweet summary version for you guys, so you guys want to enjoy your evenings. Questions, comments, concerns?
With the city recycle center, we have them in the industrial park. Is there any issues with the materials that you get out of that?
No. So the processing facility that's doing that for us has not raised any concerns or comments about the materials. Drop centers on occasion do have abuse that happens between DPW and Republic. We do clean those up as quickly as possible and make them go away, so that it doesn't encourage other residents to do so. But you've seen a lot. There's been a big reduction in the electronics. You used to see a lot of TVs at drop sites. Those are pretty much done now. So it's, it's not a lot that I've seen.
Jeffy, I haven't seen much lately.
No, it's, it's cleaned up a lot since.
The new site helps dramatically.
The new site, cameras, signage, lights, potential fines that are out there.
Yep, all those things do wonders to, to help keep people in line.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
The once a month, first of the month walk Ida pickup. Are you experiencing any difficulties with that, or is that manageable?
Nope, that's manageable. Seems to be good participation. Occasionally, in the snow periods, you have a little bit of issue every once in a while. If you get a heavy snowfall, it might bury a mattress on the side of the road, but this year's been pretty light, haven't had that issue really. Snowmobilers don't like it, but trash guys love it, lack of snow.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Concerns and comments. At this time, Mr. Whitlam, did you have?
Yes, I would like to introduce Robert Carpenter, the new director of the Armory Project, and the construction manager, Gary Byrne.
Is it?
Byrne. Byrne, I'm sorry. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. It's certainly a pleasure, a pleasure to be here again. It's been a while for me. We were involved in this, have been involved in this project for nearly five years, and started with a vision group of people who are interested, concerned with the ongoing development of the youth in our community, and we're seeing a real need and a trend that we didn't like. And so we felt compelled as a, as a group to kind of do something. And it started, as you may well know, we've been here in the past, we were looking at building a building on 12th Street at the bottom of the Hill Faith God Church that crossed from the football field. And during that process, as you know, the armory became available. And it was kind of a unique thing because the armory was really everything that we were looking to build on 12th Street. And so we saw that as a real opportunity, not only to preserve a building that everyone is familiar with here and has, holds a lot of sentimental values, as we certainly have come to know over the last few months. But it offers everything that we really needed in terms of the building, and so we were really felt privileged and honored to be, to be able to be a part of that, to be able to purchase a building. And now we're in the process of upgrading, updating the building. Right now, we're, we're looking at bringing, basically bringing everything up to code. The building was built in 1956, was built to some standards that we can no longer apply by, so because of the change of ownership and usage, we're now bringing that building up to code in terms of all the ADA compliances, changing some doors, some bathrooms, adding a ton of bathrooms, adding fire suppression to the building, and doing some major upgrades of that, that nature. We're not changing the footprint of the building. We're not changing the gymnasium or anything like that. Pretty much keeping the, the structure as it, as it stands, but able to make all the changes that we need, plumbing, bathrooms, and so on, to that existing facility. So it's really working out nicely for us, and anyone that's been involved with the armory for, over the last 60 years, when they walk in, they, they certainly would feel quite at home. However, the intent and the use of that building is, is what we're really excited about, and that's what we kind of want to share with you a little bit about that tonight, just to introduce not only ourselves, but you to the project, and, and we look forward to do that. Robert Carpenter is our executive director of the Armory Youth Project, and I want to turn this over to him right now, just to kind of tell you a little bit about what we have going on, what we have planned.
Thank you guys for having us here tonight. Really appreciate it, and we've been here for about a month. My wife and I moved here from PA, and we have received such a warm welcome from Manistee, and it's exciting for us especially to see how a community has really come together to recognize a need for students, the needs that they face in their daily life that we need an intentional effort to move forward, and that is what we're planning. Right now, we're going through programming, and we're trying to come up with different programs that are going to directly meet the needs of these students. Some of the ones that we're looking directly at are for tutoring, after-school programs with sports, being able to utilize the gym especially. And then we're also looking to be able to build into kids' lives just in being able to be mentors. One of the big needs is I've gone around through all of the different schools in the community, is this the need for more services for students dealing with mental health especially. There's a lot of students struggling deeply with different needs, and we want to provide a good, safe resource for them where they can enter in and be able to be mentored and also referred to the appropriate services. So we're really excited for as we move forward. Our projected opening date is this June, so we're hoping to open up and then be able to have stuff going on for Forest Fest as well, especially as I continue to learn the many things that go on with the community. But I really look forward to working with you and working with the community at large and the county at large to see how we can really impact these kids. I don't have business cards yet, as we just changed our name from 12th Street Youth Project to Armory Youth Project, but I will leave a little note with my contact information with that as well. Thank you guys for having us.
You're welcome, and thank you. Any questions you might have of us?
I, I appreciate it very much coming tonight, taking time away from your families. Just introduce yourself. It is a wonderful project, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance must be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read. Are there any citizens that wish to address the city council? Not officials in fact. City Clerk?
Dr. Your Honor.
City Manager?
Dr. Your Honor.
City Attorney?
Dr. Your Honor.
City Finance Director?
I have two things I'd like to bring to council's attention. First of all, as you might have seen in the newspaper today, we've, Ramsdale has announced a new executive director. Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts Board hired Xavier Verna. He'll be starting February 15, and there is going to be an open house for Xavier over at the Ramsdale on February 23 from 5:30 to 7:30. So I would welcome any city council members, members of the community, to come over and meet Xavier and get a chance to know him. Again, it's February 23 from 5:30 to 7:30. The second thing I wanted to address with council is the recent downgrade that the city had on its water and sewer bond rating. S&amp;P maintains a rating on our revenue bonds, and we recently got a notice that they downgraded us from an A+ to an A, which is still an investment-grade rating. And the sole reason for the downgrade had nothing to do with the financial performance of the utility. In fact, they said it's doing very well financially, has strong management policies, and has strong fiscal strength. But S&amp;P basically changed their rating formula or their rating matrix, so they looked at some different criteria, they weighed some criteria differently than they had in the past, and their report says that was the reason for the downgrade. So there's nothing that's fundamentally changed with the city's utility, they just changed their, their rating metric, but I wanted to let council know about that. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Public Works Director?
Dr. Your Honor.
Dr. Your Honor.
Also, thank you.
Nothing.
Just a couple things. Just want to congratulate the crew with the snowshoe stampede that was started over the weekend at the DFW. They raised over $21,000 for the fight of cancer. And also with the seven new members with the Manistee Catholic Central Hall, congratulations on your inductee, induction, excuse me. That's all.
Your Honor, I do have something. Tom, who was doing our videotaping for, I think, about the past 16 years, is having some real medical issues, and I think we should kind of keep him in our thoughts.
I'm in, Your Honor.
Okay. The Sarah Hughes from the Council on Aging. The Sarah Hughes from the Council on Aging has contacted the, and council member Whitlock will be the first to participate in a monthly activity that she would like to have a council member attend lunch in a small welcome, get-to-know session before. This is for an individual council member to do that. So she's going to be a series of dates, and hopefully to do this once a month. So we'll need to be there at 11 o'clock to meet with some of the folks. Howard. Sorry, Howard. Howard, okay. So if you're interested in doing that, let me know. And I've already spoke with a couple of people that would schedule you for a date. You do need to bring $3 for lunch, so no free lunch. There's no problem with that, is there, George, individual council members?
No, it's no problem at all.
And the event with the League of Women Voters is set for the 9th of March from 5 to 7.
And the city manager's office has arranged for posting her name. It's already posted on the city website.
Okay. And we'll keep it simple. I'll just note who's there, what time we start, what time we finish, and give that to Michelle, and get her to take care of our meeting minutes. Yes. And other than that, thank you for the people that have come. Thank you, Republic, for your presentation. And welcome to the community. Look forward to the 12th Street, I mean, what was the 12th Street, now the Armory. Tina, if you can say that. And with that, we have consideration of adjourning to a closed session, annual city manager evaluation. City manager Dan Taylor has requested a closed session this evening, as permitted by the Open Meeting Act, Section 8A, for discussion on the city manager's annual evaluation. At this time, council could take action to proceed to closed session under Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meeting Act.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by council member Gutsby, a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Any discussion? Take a roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutsby?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.[1793.26][1793.26]